Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes of reports received and filed?
None.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Uh, let's see. Wednesday night at Gumbel Bottoms, we've got a fundraiser for Power and Purple, American Cancer Society, swing by there and donate some money. You gonna make that, Chris?
Yeah.
All right. He'll be one of the celebrity bartenders, so heck of a bartender.
Who you are, Chris?
Chris is this Wednesday, and then next Wednesday I'll be up there. So. We got an ecodeevil meeting Thursday morning, 7:30. Chamber connections Thursday afternoon. That's about all I've got till the next meeting then.
Today, we have CAP region board meeting tonight. Wednesday nights, Lions installation dinner. Thursday's the Immaculate Conception Bell Tower barbecue. So everybody get barbecue, get it for lunch, or... And then Friday and Saturday, I got a class reunion, so I got a bunch of stuff this weekend, but I won't go into that. That's all I got. Commission comments, bids and contracts. Do we have any unfinished business?
You stalling for Mark?
No, new business.
Get more time out of it?
New business. Bicentennial committee for the county for 2020. Mark Ellinger is gonna be our chairman of this great event.
Welcome back.
Yeah. It's not volunteered, it's obligated, right?
I think we're gonna have a black tie ball, too, somewhere in there, aren't we?
If you can get Jeff in a black tie, we can...
He owns his own tux.
No cowboy boots.
He owns his own.
That's different there. I can get the tux, we got the tux, but we gotta wear boots.
So, you know, I thought, when Sam asked me to come today and speak a little bit with you guys, I thought maybe we could talk a little bit about what's been done 50 years ago at the Sesquicentennial. A little bit about organizing a formal committee and get your all's thoughts, particularly on ideas of going forward on what we want to do to celebrate the bicentennial. Unlike the state, which is 1821, we're older. They were a territory when we were formed as a county, so we get to go a year before them, so we can't ponytail or can't go along with what they're gonna do. We have to do our own thing first. So 50 years ago, almost 50 years ago, in 1970, we did the Sesquicentennial. There were a number of items that were done at the Sesquicentennial. There was an airshow across the river, albeit not in Cole County, but it's the only airport that was close enough to be able to do one. There was also a number of events in all the various communities across Cole County, including Marion, which was the original county seat when we were created as a county. There were, I think it was an ice cream social that went along with it. I was pretty young back then. My dad was the chairman of it, so I have some memory and recollection of it. The other thing that was done was coins were struck. I brought one example. You guys, I know the commissioners, everybody who was here when I was here has seen these before, because I always had them, but coins were struck with Cole County on the front, and the back was Lowman's Landing, representing the Sesquicentennial. I think that coins are a popular option, particularly now that challenge coins have gotten so much more popular. We may want to look at a different design, since we had a design from 50 years ago. Maybe we want to do a new design for this time around. Certainly can highlight anything we want to, but you only get one bicentennial, so we'll make sure it's what you guys are interested in, is having a design. The coins were struck in bronze, which I have a copy of here. There was also a limited number that were done in silver, that are basically collector pieces, display pieces. We can do the same, we can do something different, but that was, I think, one of the highlights. They were sold, they were sold to help defray some of the costs. Not all of them sell, needless to say. It's like anything where you have to go out and pay for them in advance, not all of them sell. That's an option of something we can look at. I think the first thing I'd like to talk to you guys about is putting a committee together. It's easy enough to get folks from Jefferson City, because there's 40,000 people in Jefferson City, but I think it's critical that folks from the smaller communities have a role. And what I would like from, request from you guys is to put forward some names of folks from each of the small towns in Jefferson, in Cole County, outside of Jefferson City, that we can put on a committee, so that each community will have at least one representative and one designate on that. It's been eight, it's been a number of years since I've been up there at a Cole County communities. I'm not sure who's even involved in some of the communities anymore, but I think it would be important to go ahead and start identifying those folks. I did ask Mike Bates, he's agreed to join me on the committee to help me to talk about the infrastructure side developments. We've done that, but I think the small communities are very important. With that, we're right at the beginning stages, so I think it's best that I listen to you guys more than you guys listen to me.
We might have you come to the communities breakfast, though, because at, anymore, I mean, we get, Lowman comes, Russellville comes, St. Martin's comes, Wardsville comes. There's really a pretty big turnout of our different communities, so we might do a program or something like that, because usually, you know, they want a short program, and just give them a little bit of history and let them go back and come up with some people they think might want to be a part. St. Thomas comes, just trying to think of our different communities that come, so. The Historical Society, you know, does their ornament every year. I think the courthouse was one of their first ornaments they did 37 years ago. And so they're gonna do a bicentennial ornament for us in 2019, actually, because they never come out until about the week before Christmas, and that'll give them something, you know, that can be sold the whole year of 2020.
Do we know the design for that ornament?
No, I think we need to work with it.
I think it would be important to coordinate that, particularly if we're going to have banners or anything like that. Now, one option I've noticed in a number of cities around the country that are celebrating significant milestones is they have banners on streets, or sometimes on parking, their parking meters even will have a small banner or a wrap on them, just to recognize that. All those are other options we could look at, too. Of course, that would require coordinating with the city.
How many are you thinking you need on the committee, Mark?
Well, I'd like one from each community to be an actual kind of a core, more of an executive committee, so that everybody's recognized. I'll probably get myself, like I said, Mike Bates, and probably one other person from Jeff City to serve on it, more in a technical capacity as opposed to an idea capacity, but I'd like to have one from each community serve on the executive committee. We can build out, I would assume, some committees to get into specific areas. We can build that out, but it's most important that, you know, within the next two months, probably, we actually are able to put an executive committee together and have a meeting.
You're talking about Marion and Eugene and some of the other communities that...
I think Marion, for sure, we'd like to get somebody out of, mostly, at the risk of sounding bad, because they have the history.
Right.
I mean, anything we do to truly commemorate Cole County's bicentennial, in my mind, ought to start in Marion. Whether we do picnics, or whether we do displays, whatever we do, I think the first place to do it is Marion, because that was the county seat in 1820, and it seems like that's where it started, and that's where it ought to start this time around. I think we can end here in downtown Jefferson City, and be able to go through all the communities in Cole County first before we do that.
Probably not much there to even have a gathering, I mean...
There's not, and maybe we just go to the, to one of the older buildings down there and just have a little ceremony and dedication and...
So recognize it.
Yeah. You know, you can always put one of the historical nickels on them. You guys still have that?
One of the reasons why Marion was, became so important was its proximity to Booneville, and then Monataut County was also part of Cole County at that time, but because of the river landing. So you get, we could even do a canoe race or something that either starts at Marion or ends at Marion.
You can race the mayor.
Yeah. I like that.
I think you have to race all the mayors.
There you go.
Well, I'm trying to think, I could, yeah, that's... Some of our mayors have a little, more maturity than, yeah.
I think we can reach out to all the other small towns and see if they have the mayor that wants to participate or have a designate. And I think that's a good idea, to have a technical committee, kind of like Campo, you have your technical committee and executive. That way, if you have other people that want to be involved, then they have a way to do it, but then you also have a certain number of people that are in charge of it, so. But I think it's good to start early. I know you even mentioned this probably two years ago, so it's good to get a head start on it. I don't know if we need to just keep in touch, and how you want to do that, just maybe...
I mean, I'm happy to come back and make reports on a periodic basis. We can schedule those out, however you all like to do it, quarterly maybe, and this will be closer, probably more frequently. I would ask that you guys think about budget at some point? Is there gonna be a budget for this or not? You know, if it's gonna have to all be fundraised, we're gonna have to actually get on that pretty hard, and the costs can be large, depending on what the goal and scope is. If the county's able to put some of the yen up front, that primes the pump and lets us to do a lot of fundraising. I'm gonna use, using the coins as an example, the coins are a great thing that you can sell, because they're commemorative. You have to pay to have them struck first. So there are various options out there, but I, you guys have budget coming up starting in August, that it's something maybe you all want to think about. I think that's an opportunity perhaps to do that, and maybe able to roll the coins out in conjunction with the bicentennial ornament at the same time. Do you have two for that?
How expensive it'd be to make like a bicentennial metal sign we could put on the signs coming into each one of our communities, too.
You gotta talk to Mo Dodd about that, too.
Yeah, we have a sign shop.
Yeah, we have, yeah. And I mean, and those could be something you'd sell afterward.
Yeah.
The Jeff City Fire Department for their centennial, they sold a lot, those banners they had hanging out there, those things sold pretty well, so.
Can you give us just kind of some rough numbers on maybe coins and banners, and just so that we know kind of what we're talking about?
Yep, absolutely.
We'll be curious what kind of budget we're gonna be looking at.
Sure.
Surely we can get a lot of people to help sponsor it and...
I would think so, too.
So, and I think we can, surely we can look at throwing some seed money in there to...
Historically, it's easier to get sponsorship the closer to the event you get. To do something like this, I think you have to start farther out.
Yeah, why don't Williams Keepers do something?
After he just made you a second. We go down a second tier.
Our audience just went up.
Man, I got another thing I wanna, I'll shoot you, Mark, on an idea for kind of along the same lines as the coins, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to anything that we can come up with, and, you know, I value you guys' input, and any suggestions you all have, you know how to get hold of me. I haven't changed my cellphone number, so that's okay. And anything else I can do, just let me know.
In the meantime, I think we'd all to email all the small towns or something, reach out, and ask them how much participation they want to have in it, or if they have a designate.
Yeah.
So, help Mark get some kind of committee started on it. When would you, when do you think it would be to do it, in the spring, summer, fall?
I think you, I mean, first of all, we have to specifically identify what the date is of when the county actually received its initial charter from the territory. I don't know that off the top of my head. I thought at one time it was out on the wall out here, I thought we had an original charter, but Sam and I went out and looked, and it's not there, so.
And it's not down a recorder's book?
If we can find a, it may have been destroyed in the fire, in the courthouse burn, too, but if we could find the specific date, and that would be the date I'd like to start things in Marion, because that would be the date at which you receive the charter and then progress along. For some reason, it always ran in my mind that it was sometime in March, but I don't know why that was in my head, but probably totally wrong. But we can do some research on that, and you guys can do, if, you know, if you guys can research that, I'll research it, too, and maybe we can find out what that date is, and then we can schedule everything out from that date. And hope for good weather.
Yeah.
Two years in advance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else you all need, let me know. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mark. Good seeing you again.
Good to see you all again.
See you tonight.
And a long time since I've been in this room. Guess I'll be back again. Thank you all very much.
Thanks again, Mark.
I'm sorry.
Hurry up and get up there, or we're gonna knock you down another level.
I apologize.
Well, Amanda and I are here to go through the audit. You've got all the nice bound official copies in front of you, but we're actually gonna go through the stapled report, the summary report, like Kristen said, it's a Cliff Notes version of the audit, so we're just gonna hit the highlights. Five minutes or so, I think, we'll see how we do. I'll go through the actual financial statement department, and then Amanda's gonna go through the rest of the report, so we're gonna kind of split it up, so you hear from both of us, so. So if you want to pull out the summary report, the county actually issues what's called a comprehensive annual financial report, or a CAFR, so if you hear that term CAFR, that's what it's talking about. It actually goes above and beyond what is required of the county, so to us, it's a reflection of excellence in reporting, because you put a lot of information out for people to look at. Not only does it follow generally accepted accounting principles, but there's an organization called Government Finance Officers Association, what tells you what else needs to be in there in order to issue a CAFR. So if you look in the middle, the financial section, that's what's basically required already under accounting standards, but the introductory section, which is the transmittal letter, a couple other things are up there, and then this, I can never say this, or statistical section, those are the additional requirements under GFOA. And the statistical section, I think, is really interesting, because it gives you 10 years trend data on revenue, expenses, fund balances, just a whole lot of different information, so you can look at that and kind of see where you've been, and kind of what trends that there are. And again, I think it's a sign of excellence in reporting that Kristen and everybody here takes the time to put all of that together, because it's a lot of work to produce a nice thick report like this. The financial statements section is the part that we audit, and so just a couple highlights about the audit itself. We issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, that's the best opinion that you can get, and what that means is your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with the accounting principles that are applicable to government. Governments follow entirely set, different standards than the whole rest of the world, so that's why the statements look very different from what you're typically used to seeing in a private company, because there's, like I said, governmental accounting standards. Really what that unmodified opinion means is that third parties can rely on your financial statements. They can look at the numbers, they can look at the disclosures, and know that both are appropriately disclosed and reported, so whether it's the citizens, the general public, bonding agencies, grantor agencies, whoever looks at your financial statements, they can rely on all the information that's in there. And really, that's why you have an audit, is so that others can look and know that things are okay. Management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements. Kristen does prepare all the schedules in there, so any page that you see that's just full of numbers and nothing else, Kristen has done those. We prepare the actual footnotes, we put everything together, and then we submit it to Kristen and to the county to go through and make sure everything is appropriate, and so the final financial statements are reviewed and approved by the county, even though we prepare part of them. Part of that responsibility is to have an internal control system that's designed and implemented, so that we're able to produce those financial statements in accordance with GAAP, so we look at that as part of our audit process. When we audit an entity, we don't look at every transaction. We would be here a long time, and you would have to pay us a whole lot more money than you currently pay us to do that. So we do what's called a risk assessment process. We look at the account balances you have, the transaction cycles, we gain an understanding of internal control, who does what, just how things function, and then we focus most of our attention on what we consider to be higher-risk areas. Either it's a large account balance, there's estimates involved in that process, and that's really where we focus the bulk of our audit time. Every year, we kind of change things up a little bit, but we always, each year, go through a risk assessment process, and we update that each year. As part of that process, we talk to multiple people throughout the county to make sure, we don't just talk to Kristen, but we talk to others to get all their input, and make sure that we're trying to cover everything that we feel like we need to cover. As part of our process, we look at the accounting policies, we look at the estimates that are involved in a financial statement, we look at the overall financial statement presentation to give that clean opinion, and to make sure everything is appropriate. Just a reminder, I know I tell you this every year, but you only see these every, once every year, so there's actually two complete sets of financial statements in here. That's one of the reasons it's so thick. The first set are called government-wide or entity-wide, that puts everything in the county together in one spot, and it's full accrual, and the primary thing is all your capital assets are reflected there, and all of your debt is reflected there, all of your long-term liabilities. So in the financial statements, it's the one place where the county is closest to private industry, when you look at that balance sheet and income statement. That you only see once a year. The second set of financial statements are the fund financial statements. Those are what you are used to seeing, and those fund financial statements are further broken down into governmental funds, which is the bulk of the county, they're tax-supported, versus enterprise funds, which is your utility fund, so there's two sets of fund financial statements in there. So because of all those financial statements, that's one of the reasons that the financial statement is so thick. It really helps to look at the table of contents when you look at the financial statements, because it helps you kind of track where you're at and what you're looking at. In the middle of the page, we've got three years' worth of data, just for you to look at at a very high level. If you look at management's discussion and analysis in the actual financial statement pages four to 24, that tells the story of what went on during 2017. Kristen writes that, compares this year to last year, it talks about entity-wide level information, but it also talks about fund-level information as well. So I always tell everyone, you really should read the entire financial statements, you may want to have caffeine, and, you know, break it over a couple nights to do so, but if you're reading nothing else, make sure you read the management's discussion analysis, because that really tells what went on in the county during the year. That's really all I was gonna cover on the actual financial statements, unless anyone has any questions on them. Amanda will cover the rest of the reports.
Okay. The next report that we issue is actually a separate letter, called the auditor's communication letter. We issue it each year, and it's pretty repetitive each year, because it really just describes the overall audit process, how things went. I just wanted to point out a few highlights from the letter this year. You know, we dealt with some GASBs a few years ago, the big one was related to the pension standard. It's been kind of quiet for a few years, but in 2019, there will be a new GASB that the county will have to implement, related to fiduciary activities. The county does have those types of activities, you know, the money that's held for school districts and other entities. It'll just kind of change how that information is reported in these financial statements. It'll essentially add an income statement to report the activity for fiduciary activities, and again, that's in 2019. So if you look at the actual auditor's communication letter, I think on page three, we've listed some other GASBs that will be effective for the county in years to come, but 84 I wanted to highlight, because that's by far the one that'll have the biggest impact on the county, but there are a few others that deal with debt and some other types of transactions that we'll implement in the future. Again, just a few more highlights. We didn't notice any transactions that were unusual or significant, and again, no new accounting standards were implemented this year. Heidi mentioned we do take a look at the accounting estimates that are involved in the preparation of the financial statements in order to determine their reasonableness, so we did that again this year and didn't identify any issues. The accounting records were in good order. Kristen and the rest of the individuals at the county do a great job with the accounting records. The only adjustment that we proposed or assisted with was the GASB 68 entries for those pension amounts. And finally, we didn't have any disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues, that's always something that's nice to be able to report. Any questions about that letter?
Nope.
Okay. As part of our financial statement audit, we also do a single audit, since the county had federal expenditures in excess of $750,000, so that was another clean audit that we performed. Our report on that is actually included with the CAFR, with the audited financial statements, it's in the back. So we audited the major federal programs, there were no one programs that were over that $750,000 threshold, but we did audit one program as major, I believe it was the WIC program this year. Again, a clean audit, so no findings or recommendations from that. The last kind of separate report that we issue is a management letter, so we do take a look at internal controls whenever we do a financial statement audit. We don't do enough work to give an opinion on internal controls, but if we have any findings or recommendations, we would document them in that letter. The letter is fairly clean, it basically states that, given the limited procedures we performed, we didn't identify any material weaknesses in the county's internal controls, but we did have a few recommendations for your all's consideration, so those are listed on the other recommendations page of the management letter. A few of them have been in there for at least a year or two now, but I wanted to highlight the two new ones that we have in there this year, on the last page, page three, of the management letter. And I think Heidi wanted to detail a little bit on this last week, when the drafts were reviewed, but we just have a recommendation this year about the county's personnel policies handbook, making sure, you know, that a thorough review is done of that, and that all of the information in it is updated and communicated to employees whenever that information is updated, especially information related to employee benefits the county offers and things like that. And the other new comment is just related to the Sheriff's Department inventory listing, making sure that's updated in a timely manner. I think that's something that got started maybe so far during 2018, but we're just looking for that to be, you know, updated as soon as inventory is added or removed from that department, and it might be, you know, more efficient if inventory is being organized by a patrol car, or by other, you know, means to keep it more efficient, so. And again, those aren't, you know, identified as material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, just other recommendations to enhance the county's internal controls.
So that's really the audit in a nutshell. I mean, we do want to express our appreciation. It's a lot of work to not only help us with the audit, a lot of work papers to get it, to get us information, questions to be answered, so we really do appreciate the cooperation that we get while we do the audit, it makes it go as smoothly as it can go. We also appreciate the opportunity to do the audit as well, so. Any questions at all on any of the reports or the audit process that we can answer? If you come up with something later, you know where to find us, we're pretty easy to find, so if something comes up later, please reach out to us, but any questions at this point?
Thanks for reading through.
Like I said, caffeine.
I'll be here.
Something a little stronger, maybe.
Or if you need help going to sleep, you know, then nothing.
The one for the prosecuting attorney's office, did you bring that to their attention, about the checks and balances on their receiving of funds and restitution account?
They get copies of the management letter, and it's been in there for a couple years. For a couple years.
Do we like to bring it to their attention, because some of this stuff crosses your desk, you don't necessarily just start reading 200 and some pages of an audit, so, I mean, did they know that if we... Because that seems pretty easy to fix, if it's been on the report for two years. So, I'm gonna address that, and we're already talking about the handbook, same with the Sheriff's Department, I bet you thought about the inventory, so.
Right.
Didn't we talk about that, too, before? About the inventory, keeping a little better track of some of that? So we're already addressing most of it, so. About the one from the PA's office, that seems pretty easy to fix. I don't have any other questions or anything, it was just comments about it, just need to fix them.
You need more to do.
Otherwise, that's really all we were gonna go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as we get closer to our bicentennial, will we talk a while?
You can let us try to handle it.
Will we talk a while, or is he chief financial officer?
We have one.
Huh?
We have a chief financial officer.
Chief Financial Officer, too?
Well, we'll talk to you.
Hey, can you get Joe? Can we skip up and let Joe go?
Yeah, let's do that. We'll just, we'll skip around all over the place. Joe, we're gonna, we're gonna put you on public administrator to discuss printer, fax, and scanner machine, and that way you can go on and do your stuff.
Yeah, that's true.
Fayed, that's true. My name is Joe Kuesting, public administrator for Cole County. I'm requesting a budget issue on a printer, scanner, fax machine. It's all in one, three in one. It's eight years old and the one that I was shown at the collector's office is nine years old. He just had it maintained. But for my office to function, I don't need a nine-year-old machine. So, I'm requesting for this to be approved.
I can't open the attachment. How much, what are we talking about here?
Let's see. Around $3,000 and it is actually cheaper to maintain. The copy price is less, from 19 cents to 12 cents per copy. It actually runs my office because we have to deal with paper going to the courts and if it skips over, they have documents missing, so we have to walk it up and make manual copies.
Yeah, Marilyn, I talked to her. I guess she's kind of lobbying for this, too. And I think I talked to Brian and Brian said this is probably...
So Marilyn is lobbying you?
Yeah.
Did she lobby you?
Uh-uh.
Didn't lobby me either.
Well, she was just, I was signing some checks, but she said, I guess, is it Connie or?
Connie.
Yeah, that, she is...
Connie's the one that...
She is just having...
Fits about it.
Yeah, yes, because some of it's not going through to the courts and so it's...
Is this pretty similar, Brian, to the one we bought for the EMS department?
Yeah, it's not open mine either.
It's similar, but it's, what's the, is it Lexmark?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just more similar to what they have, it's just the newer model.
Did it just start doing this or has this been doing this for a while?
It's been doing it for a while and we spent a lot of money on maintaining it. They just can't fix it. And, no, okay. They asked us to buy different paper. It was the machine that was causing it, wasn't the paper. The humidity wasn't a problem, that was just, the machines just wore out.
No, I think it needs to be switched out the way it sounds because you're having to redo stuff and it's taking more staff time to do it and probably running, using up more paper than we need to. I just always like to do these during budget time, so let's...
Well, I don't come up and ask for anything unless I need it, so.
You said that, you said it's, it's 5.012, right, for copy, huh? Yeah, it's 1.272, okay.
I mean, I'm good with it. I mean, you just have to come out of capital or...
We take it out of next year's budget.
We were hoping, we were hoping that we get, we get left by until next year.
Your honorary...
Because Debbie's saying we need, we need one, two, so we were hoping...
I'm even nicer now.
Unless we need to do that differently, I mean, I haven't done copiers out of capital most time before.
They were the wisdom teeth, though.
Rather than a budget transfer, just do it out of capital.
Chris was telling me.
So, you know what machine he's talking about, Brian? It's all...
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I mean, it all makes sense to me.
You guys good at that, just paying it out of capital.
Yeah, that's probably why we would have took it out of anyway if we did it in the budget right, so.
All right, get it going.
Yeah.
So now I can smile all the way to Fayed.
There you go. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Am I on a closed session thing or not?
We don't have a closed session.
Okay, that's fine. I'll get on the next week.
We don't want a closed session.
No, I got, I got to talk to you guys, the commissioners.
Okay. Just let us know.
Next week, maybe. I will, thanks. Thank you so much.
New health department building.
I need this to do the job.
Okay, well...
Yep.
All righty, thanks, Joe.
Not a problem. Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're going to do a council payable review first.
I'd ask for approval of council pay depending on you.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Update of the renovation of the new health department building.
I want everybody running once. Come on, let's go.
It burnt down.
I can't get anything to open off it.
I can't either. Can you make some copies or something? Their copying machine broke, too.
Where do you like to start?
Uh, well, let's just kind of give us some progress of where we're at and...
Progress, lighting is 85 to 90% done. We, the sheet that I had given the lighting company slash electricians to figure out all the fixtures and stuff, well, the sheet that I gave them, there was three rooms that were not on it, so they missed those fixtures. Got a meeting tomorrow to go over exactly what fixtures were missing and what the cost is going to be for those rooms. That's at 9:30. If you'd like to join me. Today at noon, I've got a meeting with two contractors for the chef to discuss the shower for the bid of that. And I'm also going to have Christie there to discuss the kitchen, so maybe we just get the price for all those knocked out at once. HVAC is 20% done, they're working. The plumbers have been in, they're about 40% done, but I had given you, we had talked about, come on, saying, and some other things.
Okay. Pulling the toilets and...
Yeah, pulling the toilets and all that fun stuff. I gave you all a bid for a replacement of those five windows, which was roughly around $10,000 from Scruggs. Brady's gave me a price back for operable windows of 13.6, or if we wanted to fix, around
That's ridiculous.
Scruggs is cooperative and Brady's is not.
Doesn't want some Scruggs open?
Yes.
How about interoperable Quakers?
I just haven't been in...
One fixed, one fixed pane?
Yeah, fixed is...
Yeah.
Fixed was around 10 from Brady's. I just call Scruggs, Brady's, because they installed, I didn't specify Quaker or anybody
Why is it so expensive?
Those are six-foot windows.
I mean, those, a fixed pane window shouldn't be that hard to tear that out and put a frame in and stick it in there.
I also sent you, they updated for price for card access on just one door.
How much was that?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty, yeah.
Thirty-eight hundred. Lot more than $12,000. I guess, still looking, painters start the second of July. And then carpet falls shortly after that.
Do I see something going on with the signs?
We took all the signs down to keep the, the four, from keep trying to show up, but they keep showing up anyways.
They'll walk in and be like, hello, hello. Like there's, the building's torn apart and they're still walking in thinking they have an appointment there.
Even sign on the door saying, we've booked.
Or electrician.
There are signs on doors, too.
Yeah, it says, yeah.
So the, access for the doors, all systems. We had 86, 85. Is that still good or is that down to 3,800 now?
Or whatever the price I sent you this morning.
Okay. So that was changed?
Yeah.
And that would just be doing the one door that we came in the other day?
Yes.
So that would be the employees, yeah.
That's where the touchpad turned.
Has Precision Security started pulling wires and stuff?
Yes, they pulled wire and camera wire.
Okay. And then what about CenturyLink? Have they started pulling any cable or something?
Well, MIMO telecom's going to be doing all the internal cabling and stuff like that, but we haven't gotten, had a meeting yet on moving the circuit over there because, you know, obviously, we don't want to move it until...
Sure.
Yeah.
But I mean, just as far as getting the infrastructure in and stuff, we can have everything ready to just plug in.
Yep. MIMO telecom.
So, can we go ahead and get BSC out there to set signs or they...
I've already talked to them, three to four weeks to get the signs made up.
Okay.
I told them, like, the signs look around the end of August, first or second week of September.
Okay.
I don't want it too early because that would confuse our clients.
All right, and then what about the door letter? You not want to do that yet or?
Oh, we could probably do that anytime.
Yeah.
BSC, moving.
I'm not sure if that, 265, is what I told him for that. I think, yeah.
Was that the price you got?
I think it was. Yeah, I think that was what was on the bid.
Okay. So, where are we at with pulling the electric service?
I haven't done anything with outside yet, Chris. I'm trying to get everything done inside first.
Okay.
To keep the inside moving along, I figured it, once we get the inside done, we can jump to the outside and finish those couple projects up. The roofers will be there next, hopefully this week or next week to fix a couple places. The downspout that's, that's come off and a couple of...
So it's one or the other on that pulling, right?
Yeah, we're either going to have to pull, either we can get the cable pulled through or we're going to have to board, either one. So, I mean, we'll, we'll find out soon.
There may be a little both, too. All right, so it sounds like the only pressing thing right now is just kind of getting something figured out on these windows.
There was nothing in there for that kitchen remodel.
No, I, I called the, the council, Paul, Dave, and called me back, so I'll try again. I did that Wednesday.
I think we have money in our budget, our WIC Medicaid budget, that we could use for that kitchen remodel, since WIC will be using it part of the time if that council, Paul, too, club doesn't come through with the grant.
Get that going again.
So, if that would be okay with you. So, it's probably best to go ahead and get the bid going that way. We want to do it before they paint the floor.
Get the price on just some of the windows. Are they all the same?
Yeah, they're, they're all sized the same size, yes.
Just get the price on the windows themselves. No labor.
Well, they're bad. I looked at those Wednesday.
Did they bid them to replace what was already there with all the panes, not like a single pane?
The windows were about 1,700, it looks like.
For all of them?
For each one, each window.
Sixteen forty-nine eighty-five.
I guess they were all the same, same size.
Yeah, they're all the same size.
Five windows, I just priced them each.
Those were all operator, operating, though?
Yes, those were operator and then to go to, you fixed one was, it wasn't much difference. They're like $70 difference between a fixed versus operable through Scruggs.
Seven five ninety-four difference.
Operable from Brady's was thirteen six eighty-eight, fixed was nine nine, $10,000.
That's ridiculous. Call somebody else.
That seemed, that seemed...
I mean, I bought windows here not too long ago and, I mean, a window like that shouldn't cost $1,500 a piece.
These are not normal, six-foot windows or not?
It's just a residential window that's in there.
Yeah, I think so. I'll see if we can do a storefront or something.
I don't know.
Did they come out and look at them or did you just tell them what it was?
No, Brady's came out and Scruggs came out and measured everything and looked at
Unless I'm not seeing something that...
I'm restarting my computer, so I'm having to look at these and... Got it on my phone, it's just I have to make it bigger to read it.
I don't know. I'm open to a nice double pane window that'll fit. Yeah, I don't need a $1,500 a piece window.
Yeah, that's all I asked for.
Okay, well, like I said, call somebody else. I think four, $500 ought to get a window. But that's just me.
I thought it was, I thought that seemed really high, too, but that's not my expertise. But I'm like, turn.
How proud?
What size are they?
They're six by six or five by six, something like that.
Because I don't see that in here at all. I was trying to see that, too.
They're just like sixty-five inches wide by seventy inches tall.
Boy, they're rotted all around, but that's, that amazed me.
I don't, I just tell them to give you different options, too.
Chris, can you be there today for the, at noon for the shower and kitchen discussion?
Um, probably, if we get down here. How big's accounts payable?
Then he'd be able to see the progress. Four hundred, that's...
Most of them are pretty easy.
I'll see what other options we have. If we consider, look at this all day, it's not going to change.
I'll find a Quaker and see what they can, what they got.
The windows, they do get expensive the bigger you get like that, so.
That's not my expertise.
No.
Relied you guys. We are going to keep the penguins, so there's, in one wall, there's the four penguins painted in the town.
Come on.
No.
Okay. Okay. Is that it for the...
Just taking Radisson today.
Is that it for the health department then?
Unless you have any questions.
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll do the signing of the agreement with CenturyLink.
Okay, so, I neglected to give you one document last week. This is actually for the internet service itself, so...
Internet circus?
It's the, um, circus and, but the, but anyway, I would just ask that you go ahead and you would sign this. Jill reviewed it and I think it's, it's good job. No dollars have changed or anything, it's just an additional document that you signed. That approach.
Hit him with your hammer.
Yeah, here, put your hand here. Put your, put your hand here.
I want to do something.
Brian, you're IT guy, you're not supposed to have a sense of hammer. Confusing us.
What kind of socks are you wearing today?
I'm wearing my AppSocks today.
What is it, smack 'em all or whack 'em all?
The AppSocks are today.
That would might hurt them.
This is just part of the upgrade to the Wi-Fi speed.
The internet service, yeah.
Yeah, internet service.
So, the, the relevant doc pages on that document are sixteen and twenty-two and obviously the signature pages, so.
You guys got any questions?
And then, this is, I gave you this last week, but this dollar amount hasn't changed though.
Okay.
Because we signed additional documents, but not...
Questions? Nope.
No, y'all said Jill looked over it?
Mm-hmm.
And then, okay, go ahead and...
I move that we sign the CenturyLink master service agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then that contract just brings up something I think we were talking about last week. I don't know if Jill was in here. We talked about having basically a form that, or something that... We talked about having basically a form that, or something that we have in case you're not here that says you've reviewed it. That way if Brian comes up here and you're not here, he's got it saying you've reviewed it, kind of check, check off on it.
Good, I always send an email back when he sends it to me that says I'm fine with it.
I'm talking about each and every one of them, that way we're doing them all the same. So if it's an email or if we have a form, however we want to do it.
I always have that little piece of paper.
Yeah, I always sign all yours.
So you all do have some kind of...
Yeah, I have a little, I always say, you have Jill for your review with the date. And then she always puts okay in her initials on that document.
Most of the time she's here, but when she's not, then we've got it and we know that we've got some kind of paperwork or trails saying that we've got it reviewed.
A lot of times Christie gives me hard copies.
Yeah.
But most of the time people send me electronic copies.
Yeah. But I guess we can, if nothing else, print out a form and it says what the copy was and that you reviewed it and it's all good to go. And that way when they come up here, they have it in hand and they know. You never know, somebody like the sheriff might come in and just say, yeah, she's reviewed it. You know how he is. Hi, John. Are you there?
I always reply back.
Yeah. I think, I think the problem with, with them sending something electronic to Jill and her reviewing it and even printing a separate page is that what happens if they bring something different? So I, I think that all contracts should come in hard form, to Jill, review, signature, and then they come to us.
They could do like Christie does with a pay, you know, and I put a, put okay on the hard copy.
I mean, just, just to kind of, just to kind of protect ourselves. Because otherwise we could sign a document that we really don't want to sign, so...
Okay.
But...
So if we want to figure something out along those lines or something, but, I mean, even where we sign it and Jill's right there with ours, I mean, doesn't matter. But we talked about it last week or two weeks ago, and I just thought it was a good idea to have it.
I could, I tell you what I could do, if it's electronic, I could also CC you guys on it when I okay it. So you'll see what I think is okay and you'll see the document attached.
Yeah, but...
As long as that's the one they bring a copy of.
Yeah.
We have to go and make sure they didn't add something.
Or somebody sent them a change and all of a sudden they print out a different one, so...
Do we have any suspicions of people doing it?
No, I'm not saying that somebody's gonna do that, but I mean, so say they send you one electronically, you review it. While they print this other one out that maybe hadn't been edited.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and so...
I used to practice criminal law.
I'm not saying anybody's gonna do that on purpose, I'm just saying it could, I mean...
Wrong person up there or something.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Jeff, do you get our sales tax reports on the numbers each month?
Each month?
Yeah, because it was up this month, so I figured it's good news, but I won't tell you if it goes down, no. I'm just kidding, but I noticed that y'all usually have a blurb in there about the cities and so...
No, I, no.
I don't think it'd be bad to put that in there, so we can, we can...
Yeah, send it to me. I'm happy to do it, I just, I'm doing it.
I mean, it's always interesting to watch, so, and then when it's up, it's good news. So we try to tell her typically not to send it if it's bad news on Friday, but she still does it. I'm just teasing Debbie, she gets it to us as soon as she can because she knows we want to know, so, yeah. I don't think there's a whole lot more. Had to restart the computer, so I got behind on some of the emails that we were, we had going across. Y'all got anything, otherwise?
Are we still running that countywide employment vacancy ad, or...
I run it once a month, in the papers, and then we change it every week on the website.
Okay, just doing a Sunday, once a month, or...
I, I put it on my calendar for the 15th of the month, so, yeah, it's usually a Sunday that we have. And it was Sunday, Wednesday, it was three days a week.
Yeah, I signed, I just had, I did stick a sticky on... Are, are, are we seeing results? I mean, I know we had signed, I think, three EMTs in the paramedic. I just wondered if any of that came from...
Well, I know Joe, public administrator, they were looking for a part-time person. And she said they got 60 apps.
Oh, okay.
So I was like, okay. But then we have this also, another website thing that cruises and gets on our website. And then it gets put on Indeed.
Okay.
So I guess having it on the website and other people can pick it up and put it on their website.
You got 60 apps?
Good or bad, yeah.
Wow.
Okay.
For part-time.
Yeah.
But the other ones still remain to stay on there every week.
Okay.
You know, so I ask them, please update me if these need to come off. So I'm assuming they still put those on.
Should we keep doing once a month?
Uh, well, I just didn't know if we, if that's what we had decided. We ran them for a whole month and then...
Yeah, we had talked about...
Yeah, we did, and it was becoming...
Expensive.
$300 a week.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's still probably 300 a week when we, once a month, yeah.
Did you give them Jeff's name? Can we get the Jeff Oldman discount?
Yeah, the higher rate.
So I think the website, the younger generation, I think that's where they go. If they want to work at someplace, they go straight to their website to see if they have any openings. I don't know. It just says we have to publish it. And it says it has to be a circular of so many people that it reaches, you know? In today's world, I'm not sure if the paper paper is that anymore compared to the website, you know? I don't, I don't know how many.
They do, that's, they're online too.
Right.
So, yeah, a lot of people read the Jeff City News Tribune, you know, online, so...
So I figured we'd keep this up for a couple of months and I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Talk about it during budget then.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, if you didn't notice, there was a transfer that was sent around to help pay for that additional cost this year.
Okay.
Do you guys need a motion to accept that audit? I don't think we've all got one before, so...
Do you, do you need anything, or, I mean, we, do we need it today, or? I would like to read through it a little bit.
I don't know that in the past we've done a motion to accept it. Otherwise it would just like to report.
I think it pretty much is what it is.
Right, I know.
Okay.
What if we don't accept it?
Not accepted, then we got a green audit.
Then we jump on Chris and just...
Me and Heidi and Amanda's gonna be just feeling beat up today.
We'll report that next year if we do.
We did not accept it last year, so...
So we don't need to pay you, maybe?
Now, we can look back and see what we've done before if we ever did accept it. And if we have, then we can do it next week.
I don't have anything else, I just...
Chris, I'm gonna put together a meeting with Pro Energy Solutions on gas purchasing for next year.
Okay.
So it may be a conference call.
Okay, fine. Did, who had inquired about that?
Boone County.
Okay. And did they, did they want to talk to me about that, or...
I gave her your information.
Okay. Yeah. Hey, don't laugh, I'll drag you in too.
Take you down with me.
After yesterday, bring it on.
Yeah.
That's all.
Anything, Jeff?
No.
All right, I move we stand in recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you all.